Good evening, everyone will call us meeting to order at 6:30. Please rise for the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Craig here.
I'm here.
Maggie here.
All right.
Dolphin here. All right, I do have in front of me verification of proper meeting notices being posted. Brings us up to the action of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
There are none.
There are none, I look for a motion.
Craig will move to approve.
I will second.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Craig, seconded by Ms. Kwame to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, aye opposed. Motion carries on a six oh vote. Takes us to the action of approving the minutes. It's my understanding that the meeting minutes were set out just today. If board members, we could move forward with approving said minutes, or if you'd prefer, we can postpone them to the next meeting if you do more time to review. What would the board like to do?
I would like to approve.
Same, but I understand. Anybody else want more time?
Yeah, are there any objections to moving forward with the meeting minutes, or you just want a minute now to look at it? All right. We will go forward with the approval. We'll start with the regular meeting minutes from November 12th. Any changes here? Noted corrections?
Cummings will make that motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 12th, the open session.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor, Miss Cummings, seconded by Mr. Dolphin to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six oh vote. Brings us to the action of approving the minutes from the regular meeting, November 12th, in the closed session. Any noted changes here?
Cummings will make that motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 12th in the closed session.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Dolphin to approve the meeting minutes as presented from the November 12th closed session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six oh vote, brings us to the meeting minutes from the special meeting on November 19th, in the closed session.
Cummings will make that motion to approve the meeting minutes from the November 19th closed session.
I think there's a correction to those minutes when we had a roll call vote to return. Matt is noted as voting yes, and Matt wasn't present for that vote.
Good job.
I think that should be somebody else. Should we be Schneider?
Uh, we only had five then.
Okay.
So that will just delete Matt.
I would second that motion with that.
Okay. So just a point of order, would you amend your motion to approve said corrections? And you would second that motion?
Correct.
Okay, so motion on the floor by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Ms. Kwame to approve the special meeting minute notes from November 19th in the closed session with the noted changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I will abstain.
Okay, so that will be a 501 approval. Finally, the action of the minutes from the Building and Grounds Committee meeting on December 1st.
I will move to approve.
I will second that motion. So a motion on the floor by Mr. Dolphin, seconded by myself to approve the Building and Grounds Committee meetings from December, meeting notes rather, from December 1st. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six oh vote. All right, moving right along, we will get to board reports, and we'll start out with a student representative report from, who's the spoke? Do you have the floor?
All right, well, we are halfway through turn two, so we are at midterms. Grades will be posted tomorrow, and all students that participate and co-curriculars will have to be half in grade to stay eligible. Our high school band and choir will have their holiday concert tomorrow at 6:30 PM in the high school gym. We hope to see you all there. Student council has their holiday week next week, so they'll be dress up days like Jam Day, Grinch First Santa, Christmas July, and Festive Friday. There'll also be flex time activities such as karaoke, finish the lyric, marshmallow toss, and more. Flex time, students did have a school connect lesson prior to Thanksgiving break to learn about gratitude and wrote gratitude note, notes to staff members. Thanking them for what they do for students. This is a great way for them to go into Thanksgiving break practicing gratitude and showing kindness. Students that have learning, language learners have been taking the access test in reading, writing, and speaking. Testing started last week and will be wrapped up by the holiday break. This past weekend, we had our musical, where our students performed Alice in Wonderland on Friday and Saturday night. We had over 20 students participate in the musical, and over 150 people attend each show. Students in National Honor Society and choir are going to Riverwalk next week to sing holiday carols and play games with the residents. Winter sports updates, hockey is 0-4. Boys' basketball, Monday, the boys' basketball team went against Dodgers at home, winning 77 to 50. The record is currently being 2-2. Wrestling, last week, the wrestling team traveled to Lake Mills to compete in the try. We went against Lake Mills and Deerfield, winning both. Saturday, the girls traveled to Watertown to compete in a tournament. The Kellal Llewellyn, Harmony Schaefer, and Ashley Aguero placed in the top six. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Craig.
Hockey, who are we cooperating with on the hockey?
I believe we're in a co-op with Beaver Dam.
Yep. Okay. And how many students from Waterloo are participating?
I would say two or three that I know of, I don't know.
Okay.
For sure. You'll have to go to one of their games, Mr. Craig, then you'll find out for sure.
That would do it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Have a good night.
You too, thank you. Yep.
All right, we'll move into a board report on the Building and Grounds Committee. By all means, Mr. Dolphin, feel free to weigh in as well. We had a grounds, Building and Grounds Committee meeting as noted on the first. We walked through all of the items that were, some of the items that have been approved previously and will be coming to life. One of those is the Rock Wall in the fieldhouse. We reviewed our long-term plan with expenditures for the next, I think we went on for almost 20 years. Something notable for board members, and when we look at our spend for our upcoming budget, we're in the 1% range that we look to reinvest in our school for maintenance items, et cetera. So we're running very light, to say the least. But we're trying to be physically conscious of what we're up against. So we hope that it doesn't lead to large expenditures in the future that become difficult or much more difficult to plan for. We'll be getting some additional information regarding the Rock Wall for all board members as that's approaching. What did I leave out?
No, that was just a lot of little things that are coming along and which need to be maintained. Really, that's it, nothing major.
Any questions? All right, we'll keep moving right along. We'll get into administrative reports. And up first is Ms. Armentrau, do you have the floor?
All right, good evening, everybody. We're sort of doing a joint presentation because this is work that we have all collaboratively done throughout our district. So I'm going to present my screen to kind of walk us through the information. All right, so this presentation from our team focuses on our multi-level systems of support that focus on wellness. And just a reminder, the multi-level systems of support, or MLSS, is a framework that we use in our district to ensure that every student gets the help they need to succeed in school. And we talked about this in the past, the three main components are high-quality instruction, using data, and collaboration. The multi-level systems of support are tiered supports. Tier one is that universal that all students receive, and then we have tier two, which is targeted support for some of the students that have that need. And then as we go through that tier three is that intensive support. And our MLSS system encompasses all areas, including academics, behavior, and then well-being. So I just wanted to kind of ground us in that picture as well. As part of our well-being bucket for MLSS, in our focus on comprehensive school mental health systems, we have utilized Sabers as a screening tool to gather data on our students. And just to let you know, our Saber screener, to remind you, measures social, academic, and emotional behavior risk. It is a short, norm-reference, universal screening tool that we use in our district in grades two through 12. This screener assesses a student's general behavioral well-being and readiness for learning by measuring both positive social-emotional skills and the absence of problematic behaviors. This screener is used because students take it about themselves, but then teachers also complete it about the students. So again, just to look at it in another way, this particular screener focuses on that total behavior picture, and it divides that measurement into three areas. That's social behavior, which includes externalizing problems and social skills. Academic behavior, which includes attentional problems and academic enablers. And then emotional behavior, which is those internalizing problems and emotional competence. So it is basically 19 items that students are screened on, and it's broken down into those three domains that I explained to you. So that's just kind of another way of looking at it. Some examples are there, social behavior might be cooperation, how a student manages impulse. Academic behavior might be their ability to be organized, prepared, and interested in topics. And then emotional behavior, examples might be handling setbacks, dealing with anxiety, sadness, withdrawal. So in this slide, this sort of encapsulates our fall screener. And so as you can see, it's divided into the different levels for elementary, middle, and high school, and then it has our district total. And our biggest takeaways in this screener for fall is that teachers play the highest-risk domain in the academic behaviors. So again, that's your interest in academics, preparedness, production of work, ability to work independently, engagement, distractiveness. So when teachers took the screener, that's what they played as their highest areas of concern. When we looked at the students, when they do their own screener, their highest risk was identified as emotional behaviors. So sadness, fearfulness, adaptability, positive attitude, worry, the ability to rebound from setbacks, anxiety, et cetera. And so one of the things our team took away from this was that when you're looking at, if you look at the bottom of that, the district totals, in the three domains of social, academic, and emotional, while academic was the highest one, it's not a huge difference between the social, academic, and emotional. But when you look at students, the emotional behaviors was far beyond the biggest area of concern for our students. So what we then did with that data is as an administrative team, student services, and all those teams, we reviewed and talked about those results. And then we put into place a Plan Do Study Act, where again, we select a small strategy to implement, get some baseline, collect data, do implementation checks, and see what that impact is, how do we help support our students. And just to kind of walk you through that, what we use is we use this resource, Supporting and Responding to Students' Social, Emotional, and Behavioral Needs. The team kind of went through a bunch of different options, and they kind of landed on two different areas. One for elementary and one for middle school and high school. And so I'll turn it over to Holly to kind of explain where the team wanted to focus.
All right, so we just started at the elementary. One of the things that we're already good at, and you'll hear later from the middle school and high school, that what they're focusing on is kind of doing a grading of students. But we do that 100% of the time. 100% of our teachers are grading kids and at the door every day, and really making sure that they're making that connection right away. So what we're going to focus on, what we've done so far is I've shared the data with my, with the elementary team. And the next step for us is going to be focusing on our morning meetings and bringing in more of that emotional sort of strategies that kids can use if they're feeling overwhelmed, or all those things that they were kind of saying they were at risk for in the screener. So we're going to be using and having a little bit more of a focus right after Christmas at our next staff meeting, talking a little bit about this fidelity with our morning meeting and making sure that we're having all of those positive things like that in creating that nice safe space in our classrooms. So that's where we are at the elementary, so we're a little bit, we're kind of one step ahead of where the, or a different, in a different place than the high school and middle school this week. So. Any questions about and where we're going? We're just starting, we just started with the data, and then now we're going to be talking about our next staff meeting after break, so.
Thanks, Holly. And that kind of makes sense because when you think about elementary focus, you know, oftentimes our students have that one main classroom teacher, and our teachers are out in the hallway. Whereas when you're looking at middle school, high schools, students are going through a variety of different classrooms throughout the day. And so that makes sense there. When we look at our plan that the team determined would be a good next step for middle school and high school, as Holly mentioned, it is greeting students at the door. And I just put in there a little citation from a study regarding, you know, we think of it as something so simple, as just greeting a student at the door, but it can have exponential positive impact, being greeted by an adult to, you know, to start that class, to just start that day, just to have that eye contact, you know, using that child's name, that student's name. Research has shown that it increases students' time on task, reduces disruptions, and builds positive relationships. So again, in our Plan Do Study Act, it's what's that small impact? And so I'll toss it over to Christine and Sean to kind of talk about how they proceeded in getting some baseline data with their students.
Thanks, Michelle. So I brought this data to our middle school faculty meeting, and we talked about different strategies. And the, not necessarily the easiest, but the one that we thought would have the most impact would be greeting students at the door and welcoming students into our classrooms. And when we decided on that strategy, we met again as administrators, and we determined how we would find some baseline data to see if that strategy was effective. So Sean and Tyler and I met, and we came up with two questions. These questions were also shared with teachers prior to us administering the survey, so the teachers knew what we were going to ask the students. And then we sent out a Google form to all students, 512, for these two questions. And in a slide in a little bit, you're going to see the results of that survey. We will take the Sabers again in winter, come mid-January, I think, or end of January. And then we will do the survey again and see if we have moved the needle at all with students being greeted at the door. And we will also be able to compare the Sabers data to see if that number of students that rate themselves as high-risk in the emotional category has lowered at all. So here is the survey results. When we asked how many of your teachers greeted you at the door before each of your classes, 12.9% said even. 44.3% said less than half of the teachers. 34.8% said more than half of your teachers, and 8% said all of your teachers. And despite the fact that, you know, we didn't have great results on teachers greeting students at the door, we had 83.6% of students saying that they felt that they had a strong connection to at least one staff member at school. And we didn't necessarily specify whether that staff member is a current teacher or a past teacher, and that might be something that we might want to dig into a little bit later, but at least we have a starting point. Sean, do you want to add anything?
No, I think you've explained it well, I'll need to add at this point.
Are there any questions from the board on what we are doing?
Any questions? I thought I heard Christine, you said you did the survey again to get your data. Is there a plan, or how often do you do your surveys, moving forward to keep collecting data? Is there a set criteria, or how many times do you look to collect this data in a year?
We do the Sabers three times during the school year, so we did spring, actually, we did fall, winter, and spring. And this is the first time that we have done that survey with the students, but after we do... Can you hear me?
Yep, now you're back.
Okay. After we do the winter benchmark for Sabers, then we will do the survey again to see if that has improved at all.
And just to be back off of that, last year was the first year that we implemented the Saber screener. And because it was new, we did ask staff to participate in the screener in the fall and then in the early, I guess, sorry, late winter, early spring. So last year, we only did the screener twice, and now that staff have become more familiar with it, we are trying to get three data points like Christine mentioned. Any other questions?
Any other board questions? Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
All right, this time we've got a presentation to the board from the Donovan group, so I'll turn the floor over to Teresa. Teresa, welcome.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Well, thank you for having me here with you this evening. My name is Teresa F. APR, and I am the Director of Survey Research here with the Donovan group. And we've had the pleasure of working with your school system on a community survey report, and I'm pleased to share the results of the report we've been hearing this evening. So first, a little bit about our process and methodology. Your survey was open November 20th through December 5th. And the purpose of the survey is threefold. First, we want to share with your communities some of your district's needs and have them evaluate them. We also want to share some possible solutions to have your community consider. And then also provide an opportunity for them to share feedback that could help guide next steps. The survey was uploaded to our survey instrument, involved English and Spanish. There were two completed surveys in Spanish, so the large majority were from English speakers. Efforts were made that anybody who wanted to take the survey could take the survey, but that nobody took the survey more than once. And this is called a convenience sample. And because we use a convenience sample, you're not going to hear me talk about calculating error or conducting regression analysis because that would be statistically inappropriate. But this is a method that we have used for many years for many clients, especially in the state of Wisconsin. And we've found high degrees of success with it. So with your survey, we had 287 respondents, and I just want to pause there and say thank you and congratulations. With the district your size at a minimum, we'd like to see 150 completed surveys. So the fact that you almost doubled that is fantastic, we are very happy with that. We looked at data a few different ways with the Donovan group. The first is the all responding group. So this is everybody who completed the survey, and again, you had 287 individuals in that group. We also know that you have staff and communities that are highly engaged in your community, and we want to look at their responses. They're in your schools more often, they receive more communications, and sometimes they tend to have different perceptions than individuals who are not directly affiliated at this time. So we looked at them, and we called that the affiliated group. Then comparatively, we look at the comparison group. So these are individuals who maybe have students, but they've graduated, or they retired in your community, or perhaps they never had children. They're individuals who are in your community, but they do not have a current direct affiliation to the school system. So here we have 104 respondents, or 36.2% of the total. And again, this is fantastic. At a minimum, I would like to see 20% in this pool, so the fact that you're well over that is fantastic and gives us a really good group to look at. Lastly, and what I'd like to spend my time focused on with the board, is the weighted group. So here we look at those who are affiliated with the school system, and we give them a weight of 30%. And then we look at the comparison group, and we know anywhere from 65 to 75% of the community members' residents are in that comparison group. So we give them a weight of 70%. And then we combine both of those figures together, and that gives us our weighted group average. And this helps us understand that if this were the ballot, and this is how individuals would vote, whether or not some of these questions would be successful. So I went over the full report with your administrative team. For tonight, we're going to jump right in, starting with question six. And here, I want to practice that question six and seven kind of go hand in hand with one another. So question six asks if the district should use a combination of budget cuts and a referendum to address any budget shortfalls and the gap between inflation and revenue. So you can see here, you have close to two-thirds of your all responding group, just under 50% of that comparison group. So again, those individuals currently who are residents were unaffiliated with the school system. And then when we look at that weighted group figure, we're at 57.3% who strongly agree or agreed that the district should use a combination of budget cuts and an operating referendum. For question seven, it was should the district only use budget cuts and not an operating referendum? So when you look at the all group, you can see this one shrunk by about half. So you're at about one-third here who strongly agree or agree, a little over 50% of your comparison group, and about 44% for your weighted group. So this slide has both of those questions, question six with the cuts and referendum, and question seven with only cuts. And this again is looking at that weighted group average. So again, the combined strongly agree or agree, you have 57.3% who would support question six versus the 43.9% who would support question seven, which is only cuts and no operating referendum. Next, option one, and there are a few variations of option one, but what they all have in common is that the projected tax rate increase would be $0. So the first question related to option one is renewing the operational referendum for three years. for three years with a projected tax rate increase of zero. Your all group here is at 72.1%, with your comparison group just under 50. But again, we weight both the affiliated and the comparison group together, and we're at 59.7% who would definitely or probably support this. So the next question was similar as question eight, but instead of three years, this was for five years, and still with the projected tax rate increase of zero. Your all group is at about two-thirds, 67.6%, compared to your comparison group at 36.5%. And your weighted group is just over that 50% plus one threshold at 51.3%.
Tracy, can I, I'm sorry, can I stop right there and just check and see if the board has any questions about the data that's been presented so far?
Yes, please.
Any questions?
Quick reminder here, the comparison group is for people who do not have any affiliation with the school.
Correct. They do not have a current, yes.
Thank you.
Of course. So with question 10, this is about a recurring referendum question. This would be increase in the revenue limit by $590,000, again, with a projected tax rate increase of zero. Your all group here is over that two-thirds at about 69%. The comparison group, just under the 50% mark at 45.2%, with your weighted average at 56.4%. So again, another comparison slide here. So the three previous slides, question eight, nine, and 10, where eight is the three-year operating referendum, nine would be a five-year, and question 10 being the recurring. And then again, the combined definitely or probably support figures down here. So with the most support of the three would be the three-year, followed closely by, excuse me, the reoccurring. We also have one other option that we asked on this survey, and this was to increase the revenue limit by $840,000 for five years. And this would have a projected tax rate increase of $32.57 or $32.57 for $100,000 of assessed property value. Here, your all group is over that 50% threshold. However, when we look at the comparison group, we're just over a quarter, with the weighted group being at 42.5%. One thing in particular on this slide I'd like to point out with your comparison group is your "I would definitely not support." You're over 50% of individuals in that comparison group that are saying that they would not support this option.
Do you think that might be a reflection of the way the other questions were worded, which did not have a projected tax rate listed?
It did, it said it was zero.
It said zero.
Right, so it was zero, but would the, it would go up, an increase over current rate?
Yes.
Of 32?
Per thousand, per hundred thousand, for the number 10.
All right.
Yes, yep, for eight, nine, and 10, we explained in the question how an estimated or projected rate increase of zero. And then when we got to that question 11, then we shared right here the estimation, excuse me.
All right. I was misreading this, thinking it went back to a baseline reflecting no $590,000. I got you now.
Yeah, that's always a little bit confusing to people. So if you renew the $590,000, your taxes stay the same, right? There's no increase, no decrease. If you go to the 840, it increases a little bit. If you would do neither, then it would go down. Right, Charlie?
Yeah.
So for each of those four questions, where we had the estimated rate being zero, or with this question, we have the probably not support or the definitely not support, we're shown a follow-up question. And it was trying to find additional information from them, why they indicated they would not support one, some, or all of those solutions. And interestingly, you have a little over 40% that said, "I need more information." This is a little bit different than what I've seen with some of our school districts recently. And it's also great information, because they're not saying no. They're saying they just need some additional information. It could be a potential yes, but they need some more context to what's being asked. Some of that's answered by these later bullet points. Some have said that they need more information, that the district hasn't shared enough about its budget, so sharing even more of the budget would be helpful for those individuals. Some are saying the district hasn't reduced expenses enough. So anything that you've done with budget cuts, sharing that information again would be beneficial to them. I'm going to talk about other, what I saw, and those things are very similar to what I saw for the questions at the end of the survey, so I'll talk about that then. And you have about 25%. This is a little bit higher than I've seen in other communities recently. But regardless of what is asked, they won't vote for an operational referendum. So again, a little bit higher, but at the same token, you have a little over 40% that are saying they need more information, which is great. They took the survey, they're reading the options, they're considering what you're putting forth to them, but before they make any final decisions, they need some additional information. So your team had also put together several different areas that might potentially be thought about for looking for cuts. So if you did not have a referendum, or if the referendum were not supported, the district will have to make significant cuts. And so they shared these areas, a little bit of information about each, and asked respondents, is this something that you would support or not support, or maybe you don't have an opinion about it? So this is looking at the all responding group. And you can see here, the highest number that we see for yes, a support of making cuts, is the athletic and co-curricular offerings at 27.2%, with technology at 20.9%. So not large figures here of people supporting really any of these seven areas at this time with the information that they have that was on the survey. So we did ask a follow-up question, you know, anticipating we'd need some more information, and had asked them to provide any additional context to their responses above. And so here is where we heard where the two bullet, excuse me, the two bullet points at the top really coincide with one another. Comments here had to do with past athletic expenditures or co-curricular extracurricular expenditures, where some have some frustration with how that was spent. And so as a result, they have a lack of trust right now. They didn't agree with those expenditures, so they're not sure if they really want to provide more money for an operational referendum. Or they don't really agree with the cuts that are being proposed as a result for what they think might be the past expenditures' impact on the budget. So a little bit about the past influencing how they're feeling now. There were also some individuals who had noted that, looking at the list of seven items, has the district looked at those positions that are non-student facing, or maybe administrative? Have they looked at, is there any way they could reduce the number of positions, or look at the compensation packages for those roles? There were comments that talked about making sure that in any budget cuts, academics is prioritized. Now, this came through in a couple of different ways. Some individuals talked about ensuring that class sizes stay small. Others talked about ensuring that core instruction is preserved. Others talked about student support services and how important they are, and that all of that should be prioritized, and often they compared that to athletics. And so they wanna see the academics before athletics. We're seeing this in a number of communities right now, where sometimes people are stating athletics or some of the students-related pieces as maybe want, and it's not something that they see as in need right now. And so again, when we're asking them to prioritize, or where would they look for these cuts, they're trying to help make those decisions and saying, "Here, but not here." There were also other individuals who talked about personal financial concerns. So that might be their own home budget, their own salary or wages, the impact taxes having on their home budgets. All of that comes under some groundhog personal financial concerns. There were also requests about with the field house, the pool, fitness center, with any of the facilities that you have, are you utilizing them to the fullest extent and monetizing ways that they are being used? If not, can that be done more to a higher extent? And then as well, is there any other revenue or efficiency options that can be looked at? Lastly, was the technology piece. So again, that was about one in five respondents who had said maybe cuts there. There were mixed views on that. And I saw this as an area where more information would be needed. What exact technology areas? You know, there were some individuals who had said, "Maybe for the younger students, maybe we don't have technology or one-to-one technology there, but maybe it is important for older students." So again, an area where more information might be helpful. Related to the previous question when I said other, and the areas that they had noted there, the first bullet, the second bullet, the third bullet, and the fourth bullet were what I saw in responses to that other reasons why they are not thinking about supporting an operational referendum. And lastly, in all of our surveys, we like to have an open-ended question, you know, provide any additional information. Maybe there's something we didn't ask, or something that they wanna expand on. Here, there were 75 people who responded to this question. I saw many of the same comments that I've already discussed tonight, but one difference is this bullet point here, second to the bottom. This was some individuals talking about state funding, that they have heard talk about a budget surplus, and why are we having to talk about this in our local community if there's a budget surplus? At the same token, there were also others who talked about vouchers and school choice, and were wondering if those pieces are driving local budget pressure, here and maybe elsewhere in this conversation, and wondering, you know, again, is there anything that can be done at a higher level to address some of this versus this local funding? But again, that's really the only bullet point that I saw here for our primary or secondary thing compared to the other questions. And with that, that's all the information that I have for you tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, lots of information, board members. Questions, immediate questions? So could all of them?
So we do have an action item on the agenda night, letter D, for the 2026 operating referendum. I don't know if Tracy's gonna stay on. I'm sure you've had a busy day and probably have other things to get to, but if there were any things that you were planning to talk about during that time that you wanted to get Tracy's opinion on, it might be best to do that before she departs us.
Yep, based on prior surveys that you've done historically across many districts, what tends to be the error rate of the weighted average group?
So one caveat I want to say is that if there were any changes to be made to the question, so let's say you decided instead of a three-year, you go to a four-year, or you maybe increase the amount, we'd have to completely set it to the side at that point, because that's not a question that we asked on the survey. What we've seen recently is our weighted group numbers to be very close to what comes in the election. What I will say is sometimes with that, when you're at that 42% to 45% with the weighted group, we'll get the question sometimes, well, you know, the strong communications campaign and a lot of engagement, could we get it to that 50% threshold? Unfortunately, we have not seen that lately, that once you're under that 50%, that regardless of the best communications campaign, there's just not enough ways to make up that ground. But when you're close to that 60%, especially, we've seen high success with that.
How do you account for the difference between the three, five-year and recurring? It would make sense to me that support for it would go down as the timeframe increased, but that's not the case. The support goes down if it goes through three to five years, but then when it goes to basically definitely, which is what recurring is, it jumps back up to 56. Is it possible that people didn't understand the nature of what recurring meant?
No, Tracy, can I answer that first?
Oh, absolutely.
And then you can jump in. My opinion on that was, Bill, is we did do some pre-work, and there was some information in the survey about the costs associated with going to referendum every three years. And so I know personally, I've gotten the most questions about that. And I know Susan asked for some data that's gonna be shared later tonight. So I think people were looking at the cost and saying, "Well, if it's gonna cost us that much to do that every three years, then why don't we just do it and be done with it?"
Which would then make sense that the five-year is the least palatable, because now not only are you having to extend it another, like, you have to take the survey, or if you have to basically do the referendum every five years, plus you gotta pay for it. So people are actually looking at it somewhat logically, actually, in that regard.
That's just my opinion, but Tracy can offer hers, too.
I would agree, especially when we explained in the survey what recurring and non-recurring means, which as part of any communication campaign, I encourage every school district to talk about this, because I've especially seen this in communities this year who are thinking about non-recurring, the referendum fatigue question comes up. And so it's why do we have to continue to talk about this? And then we have to re-educate about what non-recurring means. So I think for some individuals, when they read that and see that, and they understand that it's at this level, it's not expected to have a tax impact, it's, I see the cost of the election, it's that logical piece. It's, you know, maybe it is something that we just go ahead and put in place now so we don't have to talk about it again in three years or in five years.
Any other questions? Not hearing any, so thank you for reporting and the comprehensive data you provided, Tracy.
Of course, thank you for the opportunity. I know you have some conversation and decision-making tonight, but if you have any other questions later this evening or into tomorrow, please let me know. I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you, take care.
All right, we'll move into our next item here, the approval of bills and vouchers. Within your informer packet, we have the Treasury Report, Superintendent's Listing of Disbursements through November 30th, and the district receipts for the month of November. Are there any questions that remain, excuse me, in regards to any three of the reports that you've given and provided?
I will so move for approval of all three reports.
I will second that. Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Crave, seconded by Mr. Dolphin, to approve all three reports as presented, and that is the whole call vote?
Crave, yes.
Bobby, yes.
Schneider, yes.
Murray, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Dolphin, yes.
All right, I'll carry on, 6-0 vote. Brings us to announcements, are there any announcements this evening?
I have one, and it was basically mentioned that I did go to the Allison Waverland program. I thought it was pretty darn good. We got some good singers in our school, Latin, you know, covering a wide variety of ages. Very, as Marissa reported, good attendance both nights. And boy, the night I was there, it was great turnout, so I'm very impressed.
Thank you for that. Any other announcements? All right, we'll come into public inputs. Is there anyone who would like to provide public input this evening? Either people who are present or online? All right. Mr. McCauley would like to. So if you would like to provide input, Mr. McCauley. Hopefully I said your name right. I guess we've got your name already, but just want to remind you that we don't discuss things of personnel nature, et cetera, and the views that you portray are yours in themselves. And with that, I will give you the floor.
All right. I just wanted to speak up about as a staff member in the district, I would strongly urge the board to choose the recurring budget. Simply because every time the referendums come around, we have staff members, you know, the talk of budgets and who might be cut and things like that. It creates uncertainty in our jobs. And it ends up forcing people to look elsewhere. And I would hate to see that here because we have a wonderful staff that works very, very hard. And I would like to see that supported in a budget as well. And that's all I can say.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilinsky. Okay, Mr. Gilinsky, you have the floor, sir.
Alan, hi. Thank you. As you know, I'm Mr. Gilinsky. I'm also on the same board as Darryl, supporting a recurring, a permanent referendum. Coming from a music standpoint, it makes it a little bit harder without knowing if I'm going to have enough money in my budget to keep larger instruments or even just instruments for every single student available and up to like the correct standards that I want. Instruments to be for playhole purposes and not having that stability or even certainty of having enough money in my budget to give these students the instruments that they deserve makes it honestly just a little anxious to come to work every single year. Just knowing that some kids might not be able to be in band if they aren't able to use a school instrument just because the prices of everything elsewhere have gotten so much higher. So I'm just in support of like this permanent referendum so I can get out of this survival mode and focus more on students making music.
All right. Thank you. Any other public input? All right. We are going to move into new business. The first item up here, action item A, is the discussion on the referendum survey. As we just heard the results, you have to soak it all in. Is there any discussion in regards to the referendum survey? On the board?
Aren't we going to be able to get a copy of the survey as a board? So then we know how to vote to on it per se for the referendum? And how to, because a lot of those questions were geared around trust, gaining the trust of the community. And so I would like to look at those questions, I guess, a little bit deeper. I don't know if that's an option.
Yeah, the industry questions, yes. I just want to make sure I understand what you want so that we can get it for you.
Yeah, just maybe a copy of what she presented so that we know what we can, what we have to do on our end as board members to see if we can get a referendum to pass.
And I had requested some additional information regarding our costs associated with going to referendum. I think Suzie has that information for us if she could share it.
Yeah, do you want me to just read over now? When I actually like tallied out what the estimated costs are, it was larger than even what we had in the survey listed. Sorry, my dog's fur. If I have to apologize. Do you want me to read them all off over here? So you've got like three thousand for referendum legal services. Six seventy-five for the continuing disclosure. About six thousand for the different survey mailers, postcards and postage for it. Referendum consulting and planning is eighteen thousand. Survey costs eight thousand, which we had. Election costs two thousand. Newspaper postings about three hundred. Professional development four twenty-five. Some supplies for informational sessions, session material for a thousand. Mileage for the legal postings and attending community events. Down around two hundred. Then there's your cost of, you know, labor to do all of it. I was estimating what ten hours for the website over the entire length of the referendum. And that's about five hundred and sixty dollars. And they're putting in like what my wages, if I take that out where I'm not doing other things to take care of the referendum, that's on a low-end estimate, just under nineteen thousand. And then doing the same for Mr. Hennig is just under twenty-seven thousand. So you've got translation hours, you've got that factored in about ten. So over two hundred and fifty dollars. Staff helping out with the mailers, five thousand dollars. Staff to support some of the community meetings that are after hours, about twenty-seven hundred dollars. A little bit from the audit firm. And then I factored in just one staff turnover cost for a medium district. And that was just over sixteen thousand. She put that all together on average, you're looking at over a hundred and six thousand dollars for estimated referendum costs. Now, do we do all those things every year? No, because you try to save money, but that's what it would cost if we, you know, if we're putting a price on everything. And if you look online and try to find that, I mean, you know, it's our estimate, our best guess, but I did my best to get accurate numbers. Is that going to help Susan or do you have more questions on it?
No, I don't have any more questions.
That was very comprehensive and included a lot of expenses I had not thought.
Yeah, so much goes into it.
Other questions? Okay. I'm not sure that we have an action item here under the survey. To summarize, we're going to get a request copy of all that's presented this evening so board members have a copy to review. And we have, I'm sure we can get a summary of the cost, but we have a cost summary that was listed off. So I guess we'll move into action item B. Twenty-twenty-six operating referendum is a, again, additional data within your board informer packets. But I guess we just presented with the data points from the questions that were posed. And what we would look to do is figure out what we would like to move forward with, which option? Given the data we've received.
When do we have to have it turned in by? I mean, we already know that we're doing the referendum. When do we have to have that amount? Or how many years of the recurring or whatnot? How soon do we have to have this done?
Pretty much tonight. We could hold some special meetings, but if you want to stick with your normal meeting dates, you sort of have to make that decision tonight. Because in January, which is right before the hard deadline, you have to approve all the resolutions and the ballot language and all the legal documents that go with getting it on the ballot. So we, those can't just be prepared overnight. So we'd sort of need to know now so we can get that off to legal counsel so that can get prepared and then edited if needed to. And then it's on the agenda for January for final approval.
For me, absent any new information, I'd be in favor of the existing referendum amount. Not the increased amount for, again, on a recurring basis. To me, it seems like the most logical deal.
It seemed to be what the survey was pointing towards. I agree.
And I've heard from more teachers than just what was listed. So it makes me go towards the recurring so that we don't have to do this every three years. And their stability, their, you know, all of that, that their concerns that they had brought up to me as well. So looking at it from their point of view, I completely understand it.
I think just to voice a different perspective of that, I appreciate that if we went to a recurring, it provides stability for our teachers. To hear from the other end of that in the community, there's instability in their own income right now. And we had a ten percent increase in our taxable associated with school expense based on the appraisal of our home this year. And so we say there'll be a zero percent impact, but if your home is appraised in a different way, that is not true. You will experience a variant in your school cost under tax bill. So I think there's some community instability in their unemployment. There are definitely changes in the marketplace outside of education. I think people in our community are voicing those concerns as well. I just feel like our threshold to pass wasn't huge. And I will just put that input out there.
So would you be more in favor of a different option?
I continue to remain in favor of the three-year option.
Three-year recurring?
That's great. I lean towards the recurring based upon comments tonight. Based on the cost of even implementing the vote. I think we as a board will need to do a good job with education to make sure we're shored up where we need to be. I think one thing on our community, as much as we share it, I don't necessarily know that our community realizes how lean our school district does run even with our current five ninety referendum. I think we offer value to the community beyond what most shareholders realize.
Disappointing clarification, Mr. Hennig or Suzie, but the five ninety is ultimately still going to require some cutting. Yes?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say is, you know, the eight forty was centered around sort of, you know, the renewal of the five ninety and then the addition of what we were in the hole or in the red for this school year. So, you know, that doesn't make the budget deficit for this year go away. So my suggestion is, is that, you know, prior to that April election, that the board go to the public of what, you know, will be done to balance the budget. I think people are going to want to see that.
I can hear you. But it's also consistent with what the survey said, that they wanted, they preferred a basically a mix of a referendum man. Cuts and shortcuts.
Well, and I, you know, I find Susan's opinion valuable too because the option that did garner the largest support is the three-year recurring. But I was actually surprised by the data with the recurring. So, and again, hearing some of the commentary too about school vouchers and those types of things, and there's a budget surplus, which there definitely is, but all things that are out of our control in our district.
I would also point out that our survey did go out before tax bills were sent by most of our municipalities too, which certainly could have had an impact on our survey results.
Sure. But we're up against the wire on this.
I, yeah, I appreciate that. Just pointing that in the offense.
Sure. It could affect our data points, but.
Yeah, there is something else worth noting. And I, you know, I can't see the future any better than anybody else. Otherwise, I'd be picking the powerball numbers. But every legislative session for the last decade, you know, it has been proposed to eliminate operating referendums. And we have a governor's election next year. And should that Democratic governor lose and the Republicans control all three branches of the government, I suspect you will likely see a proposal to eliminate operating referendums. And I just am very fearful that if the Waterloo School District doesn't do something to secure their future, that your future will be decided for you at the state level instead of the local level. Now, again, I can't see the future and I might be completely wrong, but you should definitely consider that.
Well, and if that legislative did look at that topic, there's no saying that they wouldn't reverse previous decisions associated with the referendum.
No guarantees, I agree. But typically when legislation is enacted, people that are in are grandfathered in or at least have a very strong litigation position to keep what they have. But yeah, I mean, if we're in a three-year, we'd probably keep the three-year until it ran out. If we're in a recurring, then we can, we'll probably be grandfathered in. But they could take it away.
Yeah, based on what the presenter of the survey said, I think that may be just kind of a moot point. According to her, when you get down into that low forty percent range, you're not going to be able to basically convince people enough to move from their existing positions regardless. So I mean, whether you think it's the right thing to do or warranted or hedges against, you know, future legislative risk, I don't think it's going to happen. I just think it's unlikely.
You talking about the eight forty bill?
Yeah, yeah. I agree. Yeah, the eight forty would be a tough sell. The recurring, I think you've got the support there. It's just whether or not the board wants to do that.
Yes, so we have to be cognizant of the timeframe in which to make this happen. And again, if it does fail, again, limited timeframe and there's penalties associated with the referendum not passing.
I did gather data, if you guys want me to share my screen, of the districts in the area that have referendums and what they are and what the amount means compared to what we're looking for. If you guys want to see that, I can share that quick.
Yeah, I think.
I do want to see that one again.
Okay. So Johnson Creek passed one, two thousand for a hundred thousand dollars. Now, mind you, some of these passed multiple recurring. And when they pass a new one, the old one kind of drops away. So some of these have gone back to multiple recurring referendums, just wanted to note that. Randolph has had a recurring since nineteen ninety-seven for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Deerfield is ending their non-recurring five-year one at five hundred thousand a year. Then we've got our proposed five hundred ninety thousand or eight forty, whatever you guys decide on. Marshall has a recurring referendum passed in twenty twenty-two for nine seventy-five. They originally had them for eight seventy-five and they bumped it up. Reddington passed a recurring referendum in twenty twenty for two point two, or two point two-five million dollars. Cambridge passed one recurring in two thousand twenty-three for two point four million. Jefferson recurring in nineteen for three point one million. Watertown, I believe, is ending their non-recurring five-year one for three point three-two million. And then Minota Grove, they passed their recurring, it was passed in twenty twenty-three. It was tiered into three different years with the twenty-five, twenty-six school year at six point two million and then going forward. So most around us all have recurring referendums. And most are way a lot more than our five ninety. So I just kind of wanted to put that in perspective of where we're at. Anybody have questions on that?
Questions? Thank you for sharing.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? If none, someone like to put a motion on the floor? Everyone's weighed in. We have the data. Time to make the motions upon us.
I would to approve the, basically, renewal of our existing operating referendum amount, but on a recurring basis for these primary elections.
I will second that.
Okay, got a motion on the floor by Mr. Farah, seconded by Mr. Crave to press forward with the referendum for $590,000 in a recurring fashion and pose that question to our community. Is everyone clear on that? Any discussion before we vote? Let's do a roll call vote on this.
Matt, I just want to make one more point, more or less, just to give everyone a talking point going forward if they want to use it. You do have the option each year as a board to under levy if you wish to. So, for example, in four years from now, if we find that we have way more money than we could ever think about spending, that was funny, you guys. Then you could choose to under levy, and districts do it all across the state every year, so.
Could we have data about that?
Sure. Yep, I think the last data I saw was roughly 50% of the districts under levy in the state of Wisconsin, but we will get you exact numbers.
Alright, any questions about that? Back to our vote, let's go to our roll call vote, we'll start with you, Mr. Crave.
Crave, yes.
Quomby, no.
Schneider, yes.
Farah, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Dolphin, yes.
Alright, that motion will carry on a five to one vote. Moving forward here, discussion, school board election dates. As noted in your informer packet, deadline for non-candidacy is December 26th. However, the school office will be closed at the end of the day on December 23rd for the holiday break. So, non-candidacy paperwork is, they're asked to reach out to the office by 4:15 p.m. on December 23rd, and that's right around the corner. Deadline for new candidates to file is January 6th. And the office closes at 4:15. So candidates are asked to arrive prior to 4:15. It would be Mr. Yurgis, myself, and Mr. Farah, all have terms that are expiring. Any further discussion here? Right along to discussion item D, the 2026 Wisconsin Education Convention. As you're well aware, there's a yearly School Board Association convention. This year's convention is January 21st to the 23rd in Milwaukee. If you would like to go, the administration can assist you in being registered, etc. You're encouraged to attend if you have time. Any questions on that convention?
I am registered. I do plan to attend. However, after reviewing tonight's minutes, etc., agenda, and got up to whatever it was, 64 pages, then I turned down the resolutions. I just couldn't take going through the resolutions. So, I ask everyone to please review them before our next meeting. They'll be, you might be receiving them. I know I receive them as a registered delegate. You're certainly on the WAASB website so that at our next meeting, we can have a discussion.
Duly noted. Discussing item E, school report cards. I believe we have, on our packets, we have some data in regards to the school report cards. Would you like to go through that data, Mr. Hennig?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. You know, this was the last year that we were going to be split into four separate school buildings. We sort of anticipated, you know, some data issues with that intermediate middle school split, which I think is largely the reason why the scores are down there a little bit. So next year, that will just be one school combined. But certainly some things to be proud of, as always, lots of work to do also. So, I just, you know, always want to congratulate our staff and our students for their hard work because they are all trying and doing their best, but we will always have work to do too.
Alright, any questions in regards to the school report cards? Alright, moving right along, we'll go to discussion IMF. Just a reminder on administrative contracts. The Wisconsin State statute required school boards to approve notes to administrators on intent to renew or non-renew contracts for administrators prior to January 15th of each year. This just deserves a reminder for the board regarding the requirements for 2026. Any further discussion here? Discussion item G, the February audit report, as we do each and every year. This year, Baker Tilly will present the 2024-2025 audit report during the February meeting. It's noted as February 11th. We'll have reports distributed prior, and it's noted here the report will be a positive report on the district's finances. Susie Daniels, Lori Billingsley, Corey Kelvert, Beth Kornick, along with others deserve credit for the news we're going to receive in February. So thank you all. Any discussion here? Alright, we move into action item H, closed session. We're gonna, I will make a motion to roll into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, here in one, here in C, for the items listed in the agenda. Is there a second to that motion? Yes, second here. That is a roll call vote.
Crave, yes.
Quomby, yes.
Schneider, yes.
Farah, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Dolphin, yes.
Alright, that'll carry, prevail on a six oh vote. Let the time show, the record show, the time is 7:47. We'll take a short recess for the camera shutdown, and we will convene in a closed session. Thank you all.